Welcome to the Tuesday, September 26, 2023 regular meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is public comment. The second item on our agenda, since no one is here for public comment, is our superintendent update, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Baier.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee and colleagues in the public. Just a couple of items for you to know. We did receive an earmark. Thank you to Senator Timmeltie at et al. of $50,000 for interior door hardware at the OMS, the DAW, and the Jones. I've reached out to Senator Timmeltie and thanked him for being the leader in that. The online PD AG's office, you have that form, so we can put it into the record. And if we could get it done by the next school committee meeting, that would be great. The bilingual parent night is this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the high school. Please join me if you can. We'd love to have as many of us attend that, especially as we have, as you know, growing population. On that note, secondary to that, an update on our migrant student situation. We continue to see families move in to the local hotel. Our team continues to really push forward on getting things done and getting students to school, which we are doing with good success. We are adding some staffing supports in terms of facilitators and folks that can go out to the senesta and make sure that the kids are getting on the bus and off the bus and all that, so that my folks that already have all those responsibilities can go back to their other responsibilities, can go back to doing what they're supposed to be doing. And as I did this past week in the newsletter, I'd like to congratulate the Hanson Elementary School for being noted as a school of distinction because of its MCAS results generally district-wide. We had a good year. We're putting some stuff together through Jonathan's office and sending it to you so that you can have it for your information and the general public. And then the only other item that I have is, as we're coming into the fall special town meeting, I believe we call it here, we do not have any items, but I do plan on attending the finance committee meeting tomorrow night, so if any of you are available, as long as it's only one or two of you, you can join me. I'm just trying to learn the process a little bit because I've been out of it for a while. We do not have any articles, but else set me up with knowing the faces of the folks that I'll be dealing with in the fall. So I plan to attend for a while and then just get out of luck. And then lastly, the town meeting, the special town meeting that's slated for November, because we're not on the docket, we should have a discussion about our attendance. It's always a good thing to attend to make sure that the community recognizes that the school committee is part of the whole and even though we don't have any article, but that'll be up to the committee to decide as we move forward.
I finally put it on. I gotta get used to this. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the Senator Timmeltie and the rest of the legislators. This, the interior lock grant, we were earmarked, we were looking at for our special town meeting, or our town meeting article last spring, I believe. So that's really exciting to have that. We really appreciate the support from our state representatives for our schools. And special, yes, I want to echo the congratulations for the Hanson. That's terrific. I know that I will be at special town meeting as a town meeting representative. Lindsay is also, but we can talk about who else would like to attend that. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? All right. Thank you. Moving on, we have our student advisory committee representative. Today, we have Grace Weisenberger, so welcome. And if you have any updates for us?
Not really a lot of updates. We have homecoming weekend, like pep rally coming up, so school spirit's been pretty high, and there's not really much to update.
That's great. Always good to hear about homecoming and pep rally. Wish the teams luck as we prepare for that. All right. Thank you. Next item on the list is the student activity accounts reauthorization. Every year, we need to review and vote on the list of the student activity checking accounts. Those are at the middle and high school, and then we need to vote on their maximum checking account balance. I'll turn it over to Ms. Perkins.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry. Actually. Thank you. Yes, as the chair just said, the annual vote of what remains in the checking accounts versus the savings account. As you know, probably from the past, the law requires that we keep the majority of it in an interest-bearing account. And so to be able to maintain some in the checking account, and I, just from me being out the day that this went out the door, I do want to make a correction. The high school, it was explained to me that, I think it was in May, that the administration came before the school committee and asked that that be $50,000. So it would be $50,000 for the high school to maintain in the checking and $5,000 for the middle school. That is not the extent of what they can have for funds. That is just the amount that's in the checking account. It's not an interest-bearing, and we replenish that as it gets drawn down. So that is the actual vote to be taken. There's some financial documentation. The person who has handled the student activities for many years prepared that for you. It's really the ending balances as of 6:30. And I'd like to put a little bit of context about a couple of things. There's what's called tailings, which is uncashed checks. That's known as tailings, cities and towns, schools. And so we have $8,000 to $10,000 of over years of people who did not cash checks. That's a project we're going to undertake. We're required to do that before it's considered money that belongs to the government or governmental body. So we'll be undertaking that project to try and get in touch with people. There's certain requirements of, used to be putting in the newspaper, it could still be, and waiting for a year. So these are the balances, assuming, you know, with those uncashed checks. It's not a lot of money that's going to make a difference, but we do have to undertake that project. I also want to point out on the second page, there's an item, the top third, called Kids Voting, and that was brought to my attention, that that's actually the League of Women Voters, and that's not really district funds. Apparently, years ago, they did some fundraising and they didn't have a, my understanding is there wasn't an account for them to put it in, so it's been in the district, but it really can't stay in the district. It should not have been in our, in our funds under student activities, so we will be cutting them a check. Leanne Kerman, who handles the student activities, has been in touch with the representative from there, saying that we need to have that out of, out of the student activities. And then prone trust, apparently was a scholarship donation or an account years ago that has $335 in it. I probably will be coming back to the school committee after I research a little bit more the student activities and asking that that be voted to be transferred into the general scholarship fund. It's not a student activity account. So those are in here, but you know, this is common. Got to clean up. And then also add that, understanding is that last year, some of these may not have been on here. You'll see a lot of class accounts, 14 through 23. School committee likely has a policy because MASC puts out usually that these kids have to take it within six months and they lose access to the funds after that. This appears to me that perhaps they were not educated about, and I'm not putting that on anybody, but just the fact that there's a number of classes here. So we are going to undertake a project on that as well to search for the class officers where, you know, that's happening now, and let them know they do have to set up bank accounts and have the money removed. And, you know, we'd probably give them six months or so to do that. And after that, we would have to follow, be recommended, you know, from the Auditors' Association and Masbo and DESI, that the district take in the funds, and we would come back for a vote of any that are not dispersed to the classes. And lastly, there was some, there's some, apparently some clubs that haven't been active for a number of years, and they probably were not on the document last year because it was really active clubs. But we're just asking that all of the existing clubs be voted, because if they do have funds, and even if it's been inactive for five or six years, I'll be reaching out to the middle and high schools, sometimes with turnover of help, people don't know that there's money there, and just asking if they plan to reactivate those clubs. And if there aren't, if there's some that don't get reactivated for various reasons, lack of interest, I'll be coming back to the committee to recommend a vote of transferring those funds to somehow or another within the student activities. So I just wanted to give some context and a couple of things we're working on.
Thank you. If the committee remembers, in, at the end of last year, we voted to raise the high school one for prom. There was concerns that the $25,000, because it's checks take a while to re-clear, there was concern that there wasn't enough for money to pay for the prom activities at that time. So that was a motivating factor for that one. I did have a question about the Jones Early Childhood Center. That wasn't on our list last year, and is that, I wasn't quite sure how that fit into the high school activities, if anybody knows.
I, to be honest with you, I have to do some investigating on a few things, but anything, governments cannot fundraise. In the Mass General laws, you cannot fundraise. So student activities are considered funds that belong to students, and they can fundraise, you know, whether they do canning or, you know, what the kids might do and all these different things. And so that's why they're held aside, and the kids get to spend it with much less restriction than any other funds. They're not subject to purchasing requirements and things like that that we offer anything else. So that's one of the ones I actually looked at myself as well and asked a question about, you know, you can have them at any level. This may be more of a case that it should be in a gift fund. I have to see the history on this because, you know, there obviously aren't students at that age going out and fundraising, so it might have been something that involved, you know, something. I mean, so, yeah. I know, exactly. So I'm just going to say, I asked, you know, Leanne Kerman, who does this, who's wonderful, to actually put everything on here, because that's where you see these things, the anomalies that pop up and say, okay, we got to address a couple of things, and just, you know, nothing wrong. It's really just trying to find out were they classified, should they be in a gift fund, should they be in a revolving fund, should they be in a student activity fund? So we're going to be undertaking that in this coming year.
Just as an FYI, thank you for catching the Jones one, because I did not catch that one.
I got out my list from last year, and I, and she touched on every single one except for the Jones, so that was impressive.
I also think that, that it's also another discussion beyond this that needs to happen, and that is the idea of who is utilizing the name of Stoughton Public Schools in fundraising. So a student activity situation under the school committee, totally fine, but other organizations that are using our name, first of all, should be requested to have authority from the school committee to do so. We should have a policy in place that clearly articulates that. And then the last part is that they become registered nonprofits, which is always the hard part. So we will be undertaking that in the future as well, so that you know. And the recommendation would be, Madam Chair, as amended.
As amended, okay. So this requires two motions. One is to approve the maximum balance for the student activity checking accounts, and one is to approve the existing student activity accounts. They're going to be separate motions. That's how we've done that. So the recommendation is to keep the $50,000 for the high school? Okay. And the $5,000 for the middle school? All right. Any questions before we?
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to make sure that I fully understand, and thank you for putting these sheets together. So the, it's not a maximum ceiling amount that a club or activity is allowed to have. It's just the maximum amount that you recommend for a checking account, because otherwise it should be an interest-bearing. Is there any undue hardship when it comes to processing if someone suddenly needed access to all of those funds?
So that, I mean, I wasn't here, but, excuse me, that is why they came forward with the $50,000 for the high school, which of course, in the spring, is prom and boat trips and, you know, whatever else that's going on, that is a very busy time. Being in a municipality, getting something through the process of warrants and checks cut and done is not the same as, you know, anywhere else, right, where they can just do it. And that's, that's what it is. So that's really why that 25 had to go to 50, because they would not be able to get checks in time, wait for the replenishment, and then try to get another warrant. That said, we are looking at, you know, potentially bringing the process through. There's, you know, P cards, which are purchasing cards that schools use, and I've already talked to the town treasurer when I first got here in the summer, and she is in agreement for us to do that. That will alleviate some of that, because in our office, if somebody needed us to pay a deposit, we could actually call up and put it on the P card, excuse me, and then you pay it, the treasurer pays it, wires the funds, and it comes out of our accounts as it should. So that will alleviate that, and that's one of the things we'll be working on this year, and I do anticipate that those will be in place. Very tight controls and restrictions will be on that card. So, and there's no cost. There's no cost to us with interest or anything like that. And many districts across the country use them. So that's, that's really the way to go with this situation, because, I'm just going to be honest with you, I just went through a situation where the kids got to a hotel in DC, and for some reason, they forgot to tell us to get a check, and the hotel would not let them stay.
Right.
And we were going back and forth with calls all day to DC, and it wasn't here, but I'm just saying, and that's how things get, you know, that's how things go awry.
Just wanted to clarify, it wasn't Stoughton Public.
It wasn't here, it wasn't here. But that's how things go awry, and then you don't have the funds, so exactly what you're saying too, and that's why we'll be looking at the P card.
Yeah.
To have that as a backup.
I'm just thinking, we received an email, I don't know if the other committee members saw it, the drama instructor at the middle school, the O'Donnell, who had concerns about being able to access that money, you know, for rights and royalties, and rights and royalties, depending on what a show is, can be quite high. So I don't know what show, I don't know how much, it seems to me that's something you would know in advance and would be able to plan for, and not something like we show up at the hotel and, oh, by the way, check today.
That's a contractual process, right, which is very different than, which is, that's something where, you know, it's not an unknown.
Yeah.
Because before the first day of rehearsals and everything else, that stuff.
It should have been part of the school year budget for that operation, for the, yeah, okay. Then I'm good, thank you.
It's good to have those all clear, but, all right. If there are no further questions, can I have a motion to approve a maximum balance for the student activity checking accounts of $50,000 for the high school and $5,000 for the middle school?
So moved.
All right. The motion was made by Lindsay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. The motion was seconded by Chris. The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The motion is carried for zero. And then can I have a motion to approve the existing student activity accounts?
So moved.
All right. The motion was made by Lindsay. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second. The motion was seconded by Armando. Thank you. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The motion's carried for zero. All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the triennial, the Stoughton Public Schools Triennial District Plan, which we voted originally on September 2022 to be completed by June 2025 with a full program evaluation by August 2025. So we are in the second year of this, and so we are ready for an update.
All right. Thank you. So as you said, this is year two of the current triennial plan, and what we do at the conclusion of each year is we actually, we meet groups depending on what the given elements are. We review our progress, either in our teen error goals or maybe where we fell short. This year, we basically made the vast majority of our goals, where we made adjustments for the most part, for the first two elements was just timelines. And I'll cover both of those. For the third element, we actually had some fairly significant changes based on an influx in families we have entering the district. So if you go through and you look at the first element, it's social emotional learning, pre-K through 12 program development, met most of our goals. The thing where we had to make some adjustments, and you'd see that reflected in this year's update, is we initially planned on selecting and implementing an SEL curriculum this coming year. That actually proved more challenging than we thought. And the challenge is you can't simply select a curriculum like mathematics, where you just buy the curriculum and you implement K to 12. In this case, an SEL curriculum, while it can be implemented as a standalone, once you get out of elementary school, it really is integrated into your full curriculums, and it is much more challenging figuring out what that intersection's going to be. So instead of simply moving forward, we actually decided to bring four curriculums forward this year to take a closer look at. The goal is to have two available to pilot in December, or I should say, pick one in December, pilot in January, so we get a better idea of how those curriculums intersect with our existing curriculum, and then make a decision to move forward the next year. The other adjustment we made was, we actually added an additional needs assessment in for this coming year, and whereas we did a full spectrum needs assessment, needs assessment and program evaluation last year, we decided to come back with what we learned last year in looking at the various curriculum and what we learned from our own discovery of what we do in the district, to focus on the counseling corps and the principals, to see how they would then intersect with the program, implementing and the rollout of the curriculum. So minor changes, it puts us back here in terms of implementation, but I think longer term, we're going to have a much better product, with much cleaner implementation across the entire curriculum, and that should be the best. We also added one additional element, not for this year, but for FY25, and we had included a school counselor and SEL director's position in the reorg. Now, we didn't choose to bring that position online this year. We embedded it in FY25, so gives us a little bit of time to bring this program on and get a better idea of what we're going to be implementing, and then we can go ahead and define that, that school counselor, SEL director's position for this next fiscal year. All right. If we move on to the second piece, element two, it's a nasty SEIP implementation program. In this case, basically, we met all of our timelines. What we did do, though, is while we had planned on implementing the full, or I should say, approving the IP project implementation plan in April, we did hold off because we were waiting for some additional information from the Department of Education. So some guidance came through in June, they've taken that guidance, they've embedded into what they're doing, and they approved their plan in September. The only thing left for us to do is then finalize the professional development plan that coincides with it, because we in fact had to wait for that plan to be authorized to then move forward and define the PPPs. So we're looking at having that completed by the end of October. If you move on to the third element, which is English to Language Education Program Expansion, this is where we saw significant changes based on what we're seeing in the community, and actually, Dr. Quillie's here today. And if we have some additional questions, we have the expertise in the house. But the big, the big thing for us was we actually had to add positions, and these aren't positions that we simply, there are a lot of things, there are things that we brought, that we had targeted for FY25, and really, the biggest thing for this year, which we knew before we even saw this huge recent influx, was bringing in the ELE coordinator position. I like to say hello to our new coordinator, Dawn. But we did shift that in, and we brought that online, because whether you know it or not, we have a huge influx in kids receiving services in the district. But the other thing is, English to Language Education is becoming a lot more like special education in terms of the services we provide and what's required from the ELE department. And even the fact that they're implementing ILPs for every kid that's not even benchmarked. I mean, it's 100-plus plans this year. I mean, and that would be the equivalent, maybe not the same legal stringency of like a student having an IEP. And it's departments, it's a fraction of the size, the Special Education Department, and yet their numbers are becoming equivalent as well as what's being required for them from the state and from the federal government. So, so this was a position we desperately needed. We also added an SEL coach at the secondary level. That's something we had targeted for next year, but we, we had piloted at the middle school last year in grade six and grade seven, and we saw tremendous growth in the teacher's ability to provide those kids with SEI instruction. So we figured what the influx is seeing is something that was important to bring forward and try to replicate that at a greater scale this coming year. We still have an additional position for the elementary level targeted for next year, but the secondary piece, where we need the most focus, we decided we needed to bring that forward this year. We also added an ESL teacher at the elementary level, right, and that's due to the influx of students we're seeing. We implemented, we procured and implemented a newcomer ELE curriculum. That's something that we had our eye on last year, and Dr. Quillie piloted over a summer program to get a good feel for the intersection. So we do already have some experience with it as we bring it onboard. We provided, we're going to provide an ESL course through Stoughton Academy. We, we used to have a program with Mass of Sawyer that was based out of the high school to provide those services, but that program did in fact leave the community and moved to Canton. So this is going to be our ability to go ahead and replicate that in-house through Stoughton Academy, and we'll be offering in January ESL one, ESL two courses. And it's something that we can absolutely continue to build upon as we move forward. One of the other things we did is we did eliminate Rosetta Stone. That's something we had piloted. It was very expensive, and it was a challenge to attempt to implement and integrate with our own data management system. It required a lot of manual, manual labor in terms of like loading kids, like on an individual basis. And just the amount of time that was required to implement it and the cost, it just wasn't worth it. The other thing which has happened, though, is there is free software provided by the state that the district can take advantage of through our public library, and that's transparent language software. So what we're going to attempt to do, independent of the triennial plan, is actually see how that intersects and see how we can make that available, not only to the students, but to the broader community in Stoughton. One of the other things we did, and this applies to FY25, is we did eliminate, we had talked about appointing a Director of Language Acquisition that would oversee the ELE department and the World Language Department. We decided we want to hold off on that. I can't imagine that we're not going to have another ELE triennial plan once this plan concludes. I think it's something that we couldn't tackle at that point, now when we have a better idea how those two different departments are going to intersect. We did establish, or we plan on establishing, an exploratory committee for bilingual and dual-language programs next year. It's something we've talked about for a long time, with the numbers we have, I think it would be irresponsible not to take a closer look at it. Next year, we'd be looking at basically putting together a team and going out and start doing some site visits for districts that actually have functioning programs in place. It's a good idea of what the scope of the programs are, how they intersect with the schools, you know, how they, and how they would either be compatible or incompatible with what we currently do. Next year, we're also looking at adding an administrative assistance to the ELE department. I mean, we have, we have the director and the coordinator spending a lot of time just doing paperwork, when in fact, they need to be out in the district, working with kids and work with our teachers. So it'd be nice to be able to refocus their efforts where it pays more dividends for the district and has a better beneficial impact on our teachers and students. And we're looking to add two positions next year, bilingual community liaisons and translation specialists in both Portuguese and Haitian Creole. We spend a ton of money on translations, we could recoup a big piece of that, having that in-house, and then also having people that can build relationships with the people that we serve in the community. I mean, I think that's important. And the last piece that we added for next year was actually the process of procure and implement the newcomer ELE curriculum year two. So year one came online this year, we'd be looking to bring year two online next year. So that's, that's the heavy lifting, but obviously, that reflects the needs of the district and what we're experiencing in terms of families moving in the community. And, you know, the other two timeline changes, minor adjustments, basically, everybody hit their goals. With the ELE piece, we've just seen a dramatic shift, so you're seeing a dramatic change to the plan that you have in front of you.
Madam Chair, if I may, and I know Dr. Quillie's here for any questions you may have as well. I think it's really important, since I am getting some phone calls, I just want you to know that this plan has originated as a plan for our residents of the town of Stoughton students. This is not a direct response to our migrant situation. This is a plan that came about as part of a growing EL population in the community of Stoughton. So just want to make sure I do that and enter it into the record, since I have been receiving some communications about XYZ that I won't get into, but I think it's important that the committee recognize that.
If I could add to that. This review process and amended plan was developed before all of those most recent developments, and this was a response to what we were seeing internally within Stoughton in trends that we've been seeing over the last couple of years. So, so nothing in here was actually changed to deal with the current situation we're looking at.
Thank you. Open it up to questions or comments from the committee?
Actually, I have a lot of questions, but related to the plan. I wasn't here last year. It's probably for my own benefit, I can probably ask at another time.
Sure. We can, we can have a discussion, Jonathan, Dr. Quillie, Special Ed Department, any of those, we can set those up, we're happy to do it.
Okay.
I did want to note that, at least on my copy, the SMART goal for element one was not there. I don't know if that will help. So I just wanted to enter that into the record. So the SMART, element one SMART goal was, the district will develop and implement a comprehensive pre-K through 12 SEL curriculum. All SPS faculty and staff will be provided with targeted professional development. Implementation will be incremental with a full program evaluation being completed by August of 2025. So I don't know if that clears up anything, but that was the goal there. I just pulled that from last year's. It seemed to have vanished on the page, but. pulled that from last year's, it seemed to have vanished on the page, but.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it was on page four.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a space for it, and it just vanished into the.
It is, it's been eliminated?
It's there in the, there's somewhere.
Australia.
Yes, right, it's in the future.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
On page six, the, because the plan has been delayed, I'm assuming at the very bottom, the professional training of staff is not going to proceed at this point?
So, we have a full PD plan, which you can run independent of the curriculum, because you can train people to implement an SEL curriculum without actually having the curriculum in front of them, because it's all the foundational pieces that go along with it. And also, there's like, there's, for instance, there's software that we, we purchased, it's called EduClima, and it replaces the Schozella platform, it's a more comprehensive platform. And what it does is, in the past, we can embed all of our, our student assessments, such as we get through, through the different assessments we give, MCAS scores, everything else. What this allows us through the new software is actually use our SEL screener data, which was pretty much a standalone at that point, pull it into the data management system, then we can cross-reference it with the other performance assessments. So like, like that particular piece, you know, we can conduct all that training because we know what that is, but we don't have to provide training onto curriculum in and of itself. I mean, it would have been ideal to go that route, but we've already, we've already reserved the time, we already built out the PD, and we'll just have another whole professional development segment that follows up, focused on implementing the curriculum itself. So although it's a setback, you know, we're going to end up with a better product, with a cleaner integration, and it gives, actually gives us more time to prepare for the rollout, and what the PD's going to look like, that the faculty and staff will have a stronger foundation.
And on top of the page, can you talk a little bit about the Develop Family Community Engagement Plan?
So that's another plan that, that we're just waiting actually to bring to the superintendent and sign off on. So that was, that was delayed slightly with everything else which is going on.
Mm-hmm.
All right. But that, I'm not part of that working group.
Okay.
So I can't talk specifically to what that plan looks like.
Okay.
But that plan is, is, it's just basically waiting there.
Okay.
Comes to the superintendent. And it's, that's, that coincides with the other main pieces we talked about, which is the curriculum itself getting pushed back just a bit, and then the additional needs assessment piece.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so once that's completed, everything comes online.
Okay. On page seven, the purchase of identified SEL curriculum, are we, are we purchasing something to implement in the current curriculum, are we, is it something relatively independent?
We have a current piece that we use at the elementary school and partially at the middle school. Is that something being considered? Yes. But what we're going to do is, is, we've actually narrowed it down to four, there's some, there's like, at this point, an infinite number of SEL curriculums out there. And there's also additional frameworks, I mean, you can look at states like New York, you can go out to Iowa, they have, there's some spectacular frameworks out there, Michigan. But, um, but for us, it's narrowing it down to four, getting it down to two to pilot, and then bringing that particular piece forward, once we know what the best fit, that's what we'll follow through with actually procuring it.
And, in purchasing, is it, are you purchasing someone or some system that'll help integrate? Or is it, you just purchased this piece and it's up to Stoughton schools to integrate into a current curriculum?
Well, well, it depends, and that's what makes this more complicated. If it were math, we would just buy a math program, and ideally, something which integrates with all of our technology, our assessment piece, but it's really clean and straightforward. When you look at an SEL curriculum, how it differs, when you get to the middle school and the high school, you generally don't have like a discrete class you take or what you require, because you're already, you already have your requirements. The curriculum then embeds in your district, and you can embed it through, through like an, like a advisory program, which a lot of places, that's when I was a principal, that's where our whole SEL piece was. Or you can embed it in your coursework itself, is there a particular place it fits, does it fit in English, does it fit in social studies, or is it something that you do every place? Is it something where you have the equivalent of a morning meeting, like you do at the elementary schools? It's, it's just, it's more difficult to figure out what the fit is. I mean, you can put a program in place, you know, and there's a lot of camp programs out there, and just hope for the best, or you can try to find what suits this particular school district in this community the best, to leverage it for the most impact. And that's what makes this so complicated. I mean, there is, there is no such thing as like a one size fits all, or just a canned approach. And, and that's why we elected to take a little more time to narrow the field, and then to actually pilot two, because when you're looking at it on paper initially, it just looked like, you know, we're going to find the best fit, but, but it's become a lot more complicated.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that, I came up, that puzzled me, because on page four, it talks a little bit about a student coming into this program and then leaving this program after some time, which would indicate to me that there's an entrance criteria for coming into program, and then exit. But if this is fully integrated to the entire curriculum, there's no such thing as an entrance or exit criteria, it's, you're there for the entire time you're in school.
Well, but there can be more than one program within the curriculum also, and you can find places you want to focus, and, and the reason we have a screener is because where we can have a K-12 SEL curriculum that, that addresses all kids, we're putting a screener and also looking at kids who are at risk, based on things related to their emotional health, at which point, we can put in another program for that student specifically where they're at.
Mm-hmm.
Walk them through the program, go back, monitor their progress, and exit them from that target intervention program. I mean, this is, this isn't as simple as just a math program.
Right.
You know, it's where, where we're going to try to track kids' mental health and what they're doing, and where that intersects with the curriculum, and if they're falling off track, or there's something, you know, things affect kids, things affect ability to perform in school. You know, if we can identify when those things happen, and when kids need our help the most, we can then target intervention, or whatever it might be to help them when they need it. And then when things are good, you know, we can just go back to business as usual.
It just seems like a very complex program to integrate.
Which is why it's, we're going to take another year to figure it out.
I'm, I'm wondering, is it something that we communicate with another school district that already integrated it, and perhaps they can hold our hands as we go through this?
And one of the things we did, though, is we didn't just, this isn't just something we're just looking at the programs, I mean, the group's actually reaching out to other people, getting copies of curriculum frameworks. I mean, a lot of states have full straight frameworks that you can look at, that gives you a good idea how it integrates, and that's all the things they're looking at. It's not just looking at the program itself, but the framework that the program would then sit within.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, this is, this is more complicated than normal curriculum adoption.
Have, have we had a chance to look at this, in another school, or is there a plan to travel to the other schools and see how they, they've implemented?
So, you, I'm happy to talk about that, because I come from a district that implemented SELs as an integration model, we were at the K to five implementation level, we were moving to six to eight and nine to 12, we were already doing some stuff in six to 12, but the implementation was mostly at this, at the pre-K to five. This is further complicated, by the way, by the new Health and Wellness Curriculum Frameworks that the Board of Education just voted, which also has a ton of information around SEL, and the guides around wellness and where it's taught in physical education and health classes as part of integration, and so you're going to see some of that. I can't tell you that I, that I know that every school system does it as a, in a, in the best way, because it is so complicated, and I'll give you a couple of examples. If we take the two of us as two students, and the two of us get screened for X, it might be that the SEL component of what you're getting, not mandated by a 504 and IEP or EL plan, but just because of where you are and where I am, are in two different places, might at that grade level look very different. So it might be that there are groups of students that are getting together for topics in general, as an advisory, for example, that's what a lot of school systems have done, is that choosing topics during advisory, and then making sure that every student's getting a certain amount of time on that topic. If you do it right in pre-K to five in particular, and I would say pre-K to eight, where the best models are, it's fully integrated, it's changing the mindset of how we do things within teaching and learning with kids and their mental, their social, emotional well-being. So we might have students in this district, for example, who need more of X while another student needs more of Y. We would only know that through things like screening, and by the way, this, much of this requires parental sign-off, that's the other thing, just want to make sure I enter that into the record as well. So, going to purchase something and saying we're doing this would not necessarily be the best approach, because we really don't know yet what we really need, not including that within that SEL component, what are we doing for SEL around our EL population of 500-plus students? What is the curriculum? I don't, we don't want to purchase something that doesn't give us that flexibility of, of working with all types of populations of students, not just, but purchasing a curriculum. The last part that I think is really important about, about this topic, in my last district, what we found is that we need all hands-on deckwood staff. This is not a counseling moment, this is not the counselor, this is all of us, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the nurses, the custodians, the bus drivers, everybody really understanding that we're trying to have a positive culture and setting for our students to learn, and that's why I think the professional development takes so long in order to try to, to do it correctly. We just don't want to purchase something, we need to establish, which we do, we have, in my short time here, I believe we have a very positive culture around supporting students, but we also have more to do around that, which I think is going to be part of, I know is part of our professional development this year, if that helps in any way.
I guess I have a question from Dr. Quillie. Given the cultural and language differences, are you seeing the same complication in the SEL integration into your area?
Well, I would say yes. Do you want to answer?
Yes.
I would say yes, and like Dr. Bajetta said, we have roughly 460, uh, 560-plus multilingual learners, only 15 of whom are from the migrant situation that we're having, so that tells you that the majority of kids were registered here, many of whom are coming from traumatic situations and who require a lot of counseling and special programming, I would guess, and say, to meet them where they're at, and I think that's going to be ongoing with the immigration crisis that we're seeing across the country. And I, I think, you know, we have to be prepared for that, and of course, the curriculum, I think, an explanation is, you know, you're looking at two curriculums, like Mr. Ford said, a whole general SEL curriculum, but you're looking at a more specific curriculum for certain populations of kids, including multilingual learners. So I think that is what makes it so complicated, the program that might be a good fit for a multilingual learner coming from a traumatic situation is different than a special education student who might be experiencing trauma. So I think it's multi-tiered, and it's going to take a while to tease out, but certainly, we are meeting a lot of students with trauma, but I think they're pretty lucky to have come to Stoughton.
Okay. One last question.
Sure.
Do you foresee an additional delay? This seems to be, everyone agrees this is a complex situation, and the schedule slipped a little bit, do you foresee additional slippage?
Good word. Here's what I want to provide the school committee, and most importantly, our students and our staff, I want to do it right the first time.
Yeah.
I'd rather take it slow on a topic where the research is clear, but finding the right parts for Stoughton is more important to me than just saying we're doing it. Because in my last district, I'll give you an example, we had five working committees that worked their tails off of teachers, support staff, paraprofessionals, you name it, they wanted to be embedded in this development, right? They wanted to make sure that we were doing the training, so, example, which we've done in Stoughton as well, trauma-sensitive school. My secondary staff came out of nowhere in my last community, we, we knew our elementary staff would come forward, but we were really pleased that our secondary staff really wanted to know more about trauma and what it means. And we set up a program for that to make sure that they got professional development, above and beyond course reimbursement, by the way. It, it became an initiative, it wasn't just taking a course, we really wanted to push the idea of giving teachers that, the tools in the classroom. So that would be one example, but the more important part is, I am not a big fan of redoing things over and over, I like doing things right the first time on behalf of the school committee and the district, and continuously improving it, right? So that if there is a hitch, or glitch, or whatever word you were using, I apologize, we are fixing it, we are working towards that, that goal. So, so I, can I tell you I see a delay? If I was a betting man, I would say yes, that we, we want to really take this at a level where we feel comfortable, and like I said, we just got the brand-new approved, they're not even printed yet, to the public and then to you folks, on the wellness, which has a tremendous amount of SEL topics, which hadn't been done since 1999. And so what does that mean for our kids when they're taking a wellness class here in, in Stoughton? And then lastly, we do have a graduate, a vision of a graduate, which we'll probably bring to you in the, in the future, which really takes, takes a look at the six skillsets that we want every student who graduates from Stoughton Public Schools has, beginning in the early ages, what does responsibility look like in kindergarten, first grade, fifth grade, ninth grade, 12th grade? What does social and cultural awareness look like? What is creativity and critical reading, what do those things look like at each of our grade levels all the way through? That will be part of an SEL, in my opinion, an SEL well-rounded curriculum, because those are topics that hit that as well, around the, the major five castle skillsets that we want all kids to have.
It seems like the complete integration to me would mean that all the faculty and teachers are well-trained in SEL, very well-trained, and then we're going to have outliers of students that cannot be handled within the normal classroom, and then they're taken out. So if I look at it that way, the difficult aspect would be making sure all staff is trained very well. And then my next, well, I said, one more question. How are the teachers and the staff perceiving this as a, a new challenge to them in the classroom?
Well, I think, I think the challenge of social-emotional learning was here before COVID hit, so I think our staff, I can't speak, I wasn't here in Stoughton, but I can tell you right now, as I speak to teachers here in Stoughton, support staff, what we're seeing with certain behaviors in certain students is something that we need to provide more professional development, more opportunities for professional development, and then the last part would be the continuously training. I mean, if you take a look at it, from my, you know, very strong perspective of, of social-emotional learning, students need to be okay and ready to learn every day, right? That's one of the reasons why at the elementary level, we start our mornings that way, are we ready to learn, what does the day look like, so on and so forth. That's not really what happens at the secondary level, as we all know. So from my perspective, I haven't taken a survey, but the pulse of the district is telling me that, yes, we are definitely on board on wanting to have these discussions, to have the training, that it is integrated, it's harder to do at the secondary level. I was a secondary teacher, I was a secondary principal, it is harder to do at the secondary level, including that even the training that takes place at undergraduate level is, is not really around the SEL component as much as it is at the elementary level. So it's going to be continuously, it's going to be continuously training, it's going to be training, continuously training, don't forget, we have turnover in staff, every time we have new people coming to our district, we have to provide them that, that deep-rooted, deep-rooted professional development around our expectations of what SEL is in our district as part of the integration of, of that.
I, I see it, first of all, I think it's a good thing we should do it. What I see is, is the, perhaps, an additional strain on our teachers, because not only you're teaching the lesson, you're, you're looking at students a different way, and trying to identify problems that has to be resolved before they can learn their lessons. And I was curious on what the teachers' thoughts are with this.
I haven't asked the teachers directly, so I don't want to give you a dishonest opinion, except to say that I do know, in having some conversations with folks, that our employees of ours, that are teachers, that they've said that social-emotional learning is something that they're into, they know the plan in terms of having it available to them, but I haven't, I myself haven't surveyed the, the teachers about, is this a good initiative? I will tell you that teaching today is very different than when I taught, number one. Number two, the issues that we're seeing coming out of COVID are real. I think the way we taught before COVID and the way we teach today is changing every day, we are asking teachers to change every day, and, and they're, and they're doing that on a regular basis, but what's in front of us is also changing every day, not just because of a multilingual perspective, not just because of a learning challenge, but because of just overall behavioral issues, expectations. If you read my letter, newsletter this week, you clearly saw my expectations that I have of the school system and families working together to make sure that when we're at sporting events or on our buses, that family and schools are working together to make sure that children are doing the right thing, and I also thank those that are doing the right thing. But it's different today, there's no doubt, and I think that's the reason why this is such a, a hot topic, if you will, that it's, it's come to such the forefront, is because it's not just, it's just not reading and writing and arithmetic, it's also SEL, and I know that that can be controversial in the eyes of some, but it, it's a huge component. If a student isn't ready to learn, what do we do?
Mm-hmm.
You know, how do we, you know, get that? If we're not motivated to go to work every day, how, how do we motivate each other? Well, in our cases, maybe it's because we have to pay the bills, but, you know, but we also like. we also like what we do. So how do we get students to think that way? And I think our staff, again, in the limited role I've had with the staff, except, you know, being out and about, there's a, there's a really lot of good stuff going on. The question is, is it comprehensive? So when we're looking at our K to five, our K to five schools, is it comprehensive? Can, can you say when you leave each of our elementary schools, or two of our elementary schools, and now you all go to the middle school, that we did do that balanced approach that we said we want to talk about? I think that's going to be the hardest, that's always the hardest part, is getting the five islands to really know and be working together, so that when they move into sixth grade and then into ninth grade, it's aligned. It is an expectation. So this is a big undertaking for the district. We, we still have to have some discussions about that director position, in terms of how we fill that and go about it. Is it separate? Is it counseling and SEL? Is it just SEL? We have a lot of those discussions that we'll be coming to you with in the near future.
Could I add something? Two things. When you talk about how the faculty is going to buy into something like this, one of the things that I like about working education is I think most people are in the business for the right reasons, and they care about kids and caring, having a positive impact on kids. And this only allows you to have a more positive impact. Also, when you, if you have an effective SEL program, it affects how people look at the schools, it affects how people look at their education, kids see the school as a place of support. It changes how, how kids behave in school, and in fact, it improves the environment for them, and it improves the environment for every faculty member teaching in the school. And I think that's a huge dividend. I also want to go back a couple of years. We offered two years of trauma-informed classrooms training. So embedded in our annual professional development day, and then stand-alones, as well as some fairly well-delineated and designated plans for the entire faculty. And after two years of running that program, when we were wrapping it up and moving it on to the next focus, I ended up putting together a graduate certificate program, Trauma-Informed School through Leslie University, and we had twenty people buy in and sign up for another two-year program in trauma-informed classrooms. I think that tells the tale, in terms of where people's focus are and what they value in this particular school district. So I think this is going to pay huge dividends, and I absolutely believe the faculty is going to, going to go ahead and line up and be behind this, because they know the impact it can have on kids, their classrooms, and the district as a whole.
Very good, thank you.
Lindsay, Chris, any questions?
Lindsay?
Yeah, I just want to express some gratitude here. I think this is like, you know, in July 2022, when we set the triennial plan, it's like, we try to see what's feasible in the next three years, and this also really shows how the district is adapting to what is actually happening in those three years, that we maybe didn't see coming in July 2022, or did, but like, now have found better ways to address it. So I just like really appreciate that. I think we're doing a lot here to support all of our students through the social-emotional learning pieces, but also the, the new IEP. Project is a huge undertaking, so very excited to see us like getting ahead of that. And then just, you know, making sure that we are supporting all of our community members and our English learners, and just like making sure that they have the supports they need to be successful here. Like, thank you for, to everyone who's involved in this, for doing this and showing up for our students in this way. It's really important, and just like really appreciate that.
It's huge work.
Chris? When I was a student teacher, I always remember an editorial cartoon that was in the faculty lounge, and it was a giant dump truck, and out of it was spilling all this garbage that was labeled like drugs, you know, sexual health, gang prevention, and then there's this tiny little one-room schoolhouse called the Education System, with everything, you know, and that's, it's all societal zills. It's the one place where they are captive audiences, and so that's where we try to, to address everything. And it's, it's a very challenging role to be a teacher, to have to contend with all of that, in addition to, oh, and let's learn some math or history here, you know? So I always appreciate that, and I definitely appreciate the, the careful and detailed approach, and the fact that you are adjusting the plan as needed, and rather than, well, this is what we planned for, and darn it, full Steve Speed ahead, we're just going to do it. I, I have a couple of clarifying questions for myself, coming into this, like, somewhat halfway through the process. You mentioned several states that have frameworks. I'm a little surprised that Massachusetts is not leading the pack on this, or does Massachusetts have frameworks and we're just trying to do local control, individualized approach?
Great question. So as I mentioned earlier, the new wellness, physical education framework, health framework, has just been voted by the board after public comment. That will be coming to us as school districts. That's where you'll see a major component of the five castle areas under SEL. And it's definitely not only within physical education and wellness, but it's also being pushed, as you know, as an integration everywhere. But that's the core right now. I don't see the Commonwealth saying beyond utilizing the castle network, that here's our other framework as well. Currently, it's just embedded, it's been left to us as districts to say, what kind of a school culture and climate do we want on this?
Okay, thank you for that. There are a couple of places, specifically for the, for the first, what are we calling them? For the, for Element One, selecting two SEL curriculum to pilot. I'm assuming that there's criteria for selection, and that's something that the working group has, has put together, and, okay. And I imagine it may tie back into what your vision is for what students will achieve by certain grade levels as, as they, as they go through their path here at Stoughton Public Schools?
Yeah, again, it won't be my vision, it'll be our collective vision, but yes, I think we have to have those discussions around what is age-appropriate, where does it happen, and then what is the goal for that grade overall? That's, that's how we're seeing it.
And the final question I have is along the lines of my colleague on the school committee, in terms of the outreach to, to family. I, I just wondered if there's any more intentionality behind that in terms of, and I know family engagement is even more complicated than these topics are, but co-designers, in a sense, of, of the plan, or of the outcome, or of the goal benchmark behavior, rather than, this is what we've created, and now we're just doing outreach to communicate to you what we are doing to your children while they're in our care? Like, that was poorly worded, but.
No, I, I mean, parent involvement in this particular case, the way it's come up is, is, is both incredibly positive, and then some question marks. And that's not only in Massachusetts, that's nationally. I think this is a part of taking the educational goals that we're putting forward, and of course, listening to, like we do with a lot of other topics, really listening to, how is this working and not working? For example, and I'll, if we're utilizing, at some point down the road, we're utilizing this type of language within our report guide, what does that look like? Of course, we would want to have that quoted with more input from third parties, as well as families. I think, I think the, the critical part here is, we're not even there yet, right? We're trying to figure out what is the best road for us to take around the piloting, or the choosing the piloting? Because, you know, one of the things that we find in piloting curriculum of any sort, it's either a home run, or it's a back away and say, okay, we're going to have to use a little bit of that, a little bit of that, and our own stuff to make it work. As a matter of fact, I would argue, as a parent, I saw that in Stoughton with the ELA curriculum, and math curriculum in K to five, where the teachers, along with the, with the purchasing of curriculum stuff, created the ELA.
Always have a bag of tricks, always.
So I don't see this as, you know, we, we need to be on the same page, we need to be piloting stuff, yes, but, but just purchasing something isn't the way to resolve this.
Right, right. No, thank you for that. I, I just, once again, would, would love to reiterate just the need for intentional partnership with families, especially when it comes to special education, as well as English language learners, English language learners making sure that there's a cultural competency around the approach, to ensure that the, the values of that, you know, originating culture are being uplifted, and, and those differences are being recognized and celebrated, rather than a message or a perceived message of conforming.
That's why we felt it was so important to put in the positions of the community and family liaisons, because truthfully, you need a cultural broker.
Right.
To work with families, especially where most of our, sixty percent of our families or more are from Brazilian Portuguese-speaking background, followed by Haitian Creole, and it is really important for us as a school district to have representatives, to be the cultural brokers, to help their voices be heard and be part of our community.
Yeah, no, I love that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one, I hope, hopefully, last question. Just, and for you, Dr. Quailey, just looking at, if I understand correctly, so for one of the major differences, or one of the adjustments of the plan, was that you're moving some of the new positions, you're promoting, you're really pushing for the secondary this year, and FY, this year, and then FY '25 will be the elementary. So that's where the most need is right now.
And I can give you data to support the reasoning, and what I brought to Dr. Byetta. When we looked at the data across 2022 and 2023, the Department of Education requires that we are on track, that fifty percent of our multi-English learners, I like to say multilingual learner, because that's more asset-based.
Yes, yes.
So as our multilingual learners, they want us to have fifty percent of our student population on track to be fully English proficient, fluent in reading, writing, speaking, and listening within six years. So we fell a little short in 2022, in the forties range, not the fifty range, but we saw pretty much our K through five English learners were making progress at sometimes a seventy and eighty percent level. Now, a lot of that is to do, do with age of acquisition. You learn language better when you're younger. But some of that we saw with the second year of data in 2023 was the coaching piece. So we piloted one of our elementary teachers, you know, thirty percent, forty percent of his time, working with the sixth and seventh grade newcomer teams, where many of our newcomer students were, and we saw sixth grade go from zero percent progress in 2022 to forty-five percent progress in 2023.
Wow.
And the seventh grade went from ten percent progress to forty-seven percent progress. And the only difference we made was putting that coach in to work with the general education teachers. So when I see that, I can't in good faith not want to bring that coaching position up, you know, a year, because we're really in need from eighth grade to twelfth grade, because of age of acquisition. Newcomers coming when they're older, and, you know, that is, from a social-emotional standpoint, a tough age. So now we're going to have the coach, hopefully, we are posting it, work with OMS teachers and SHS teachers, and go between the buildings for now. And I would bet that next year, we'll see an uptick in our progress for our multilingual learners because of that. So I'm really excited.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Ford, do we need to vote on the, this, all right, this is just an update, all right? All right, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate all the work and all the updates. All right. Moving on, our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's entry plan, some of which we'll.
Yes, some of which we're chit-chatting about. So what you have before you is a transitional entry plan, because I have been involved with the district, although informally back in late spring, I started to get reports, you know, do the reading and so on and so forth. The goal here is to provide you folks by January, some top-level information about the district, based on information that I've gathered from handbooks, through meeting with the town manager, to the, to meeting with you, to things that I'm seeing in terms of our structures, and provide you what I would call opportunities for continuing to have us move forward. This will clearly, as a transitional plan, take a look at student achievement, governance, organizational capacity, capacity and alignment, or our structures and systems, community and public relations, I believe we just talked a little bit about that, in terms of parents and school and district safety operations and finance. And of course, we've had some of those discussions as well. And the idea is really to take everything you have and say, just like you did tonight, where are we? How can we move up from very ten thousand feet, if you will? So that I can then go to the next thing, item that you have in front of you, which is the goals draft, and take that information. One of the things that I'm really, will be releasing next week is, I will be in every building during the end of October for an hour and a half to two hours, to just have coffee hour with staff, any employee that wants to come in, say hello, meet with me for five, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, I can even make an appointment for a longer meeting, if they want to do it after school hours. Doing the same thing, and already have on the town side, with some of the folks, have actually one coming up next week, in terms of department heads and our relationship, and how could, how's that working? How can we continue to improve it? And then lastly, and, and more importantly, begin to grasp the culture of the district. And, you know, I have some thoughts on that, because I do live in town, I am a resident, I've, I've known the school system for a long time, sitting in your seat at one time, I'm a product of the system, but also being able to look under the, under the hood, if you will, and say, how can we continue to improve? And again, I will tell you, after many years, my fifteenth year in this role in multiple districts, what I saw tonight, between you folks asking your questions and the plan, is a working document. It's not shelved, it's a working document, and that's kudos to the folks that you have here, the team, because in many districts, it's, it just sits and it's gone, and then you do a new one three years later, and really, there's no in-betweens in saying, how successful are we being, or how far behind are we, or we weren't able to do it because of the budget, or whatever the case may be. In this particular case, it's a working document, so, you know, please continue to make sure that, that we're doing that. So that's the general gist of the plan. It'll be a written report presentation that I'll provide to you.
I was just wondering if I might want to add in this, on the document review, is the emergency intervention from the medical team?
Sure.
Yeah, like to?
Yeah, I would put that just under what I would call crisis handbook, but yes, I'll make sure that the emergency stuff's on there. I actually already wrote it for the record.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the entry plan?
Two comments. Things that I have seen done elsewhere.
Yep.
One is, instead of coffee hour, like a pizza hour for students.
Yep.
An opportunity for students to come and to, to give their candid perspective on the district and the schools, especially those that are in the high school, that perhaps have gone through, you know, different levels of Stoughton schools. They have really great ideas and perspectives on how things could, how things have gone and how they could be even better.
Yeah, and I will have, prior to the written report being done, I will have my first meetings with the superintendent's advisory for six to eight, and superintendent's advisory for nine to twelve take place as well. So those will be two working groups of students. I am separating, because we're larger, into a middle school group, probably somewhere around six to eight students, and then the high school group, probably twelve to fifteen students. And we'll do some general talk about how the district is doing, and what do they like? And you can ask a senior, how's it been? You get a lot of really good information.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
They're not shy.
No, they're not shy.
The other thing that I've seen done, that I really liked, is a coffee hour with the superintendent with the public.
Already being planned. Those are going to be done towards the end of October and the beginning two weeks of November. They'll happen again, starting for the remainder of the year, there'll be a week, it's probably going to be backed up into the school committee meeting, maybe like five to six, where I'm available for the public to come into the office. I actually like to go to the schools. I found that going to the schools, I get more people to come, so my goal is going to be to take each of our eight schools, and probably do two a week, every week, with like a six to seven-thirty coffee hour. We're also thinking of doing it virtually in the morning, for those families who prefer to, to, to do it virtually, and we might even do the evening as a hybrid, so that it's available to someone to just sit at home and watch it, or to sit in the audience and watch it. So yes, definitely planning to do all of that.
Okay, excellent.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Actually, going back to what I said earlier, when I'm referring to an emergency medical intervention, not only in the school, but since we have expanded the sports into the middle school.
Yep.
I think we should probably take a good look at, how do you handle an emergency after hours?
One of, and I appreciate you saying that, because one of the things that we will be doing with our athletic directors, we're going to be taking a look at a middle school athletic handbook, which will address a lot of the things that you're saying, but also talk a lot more specifically about expectations and all the parental stuff that you saw in that one pager, needs to be. in that one pager. Needs to be a little bit more detailed. But yes, I'll make sure that we add that to it.
Any other questions, comments? I hope you don't drink coffee every single one of those coffee hours. I'm going to drink too.
No, I do not drink coffee in the evening, so I'll be having my water in the evening. But thank you.
Oh, one more thing. Sorry. I thought maybe you might want to add, I know you have a town, town manager in here, but I thought maybe you might want to add the engineer in traffic, dealing with traffic. He might be a good person to chat with.
Well, we definitely have been having a lot of chats, so I'll add him to the plan because I've asked him to, I've asked Mark if he could take a look at the system and release our lights at the library, middle school, and at the, for, even if it's a seven to 10-minute extension, we could probably get traffic going. But yes, I'll make sure that I have in detail Mark on this.
Actually heard that, so I can verify that he got some details about that. All right. Next, that moves us right into the superintendent's goals draft. This is one of our big jobs is to evaluate the superintendent. And for this, you know, we have to, we, the superintendent should have one professional practice goal for individual professional growth, one student learning goal, obviously related to student learning. And we usually have three. It's two to four district improvement goals. We have the training plan here, which can help serve as kind of a great jumping off point for that. So these are what we're going to be looking towards. And what we need to discuss are the goals, as well as kind of the timeline for this process.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, thank you. So I'm, I'm suggesting that, because I've had some experience with this process and seeing that I'm new to the district as well, that we will be doing this in two parts. This part tonight would be a conversation around the goals where you think they should be in terms of here. And then the next one is I'll come up with specific action details for each. This plan is going to be done as a full leadership team as well. We are all going to be going that way as a team, as part of our goals. Of course, if there's any individual needs that I see in an administrator, I'll handle those. But right now, the idea is to really take a look at these. It's a pretty complete review of where we are. My goal is to get this, you know, by, by June, to be able to give you an update of where we are, and by the following year saying, this is what we've done, this is what's still left to do in terms of whatever that may be. One of the big, one of the big issues that I am a stickler on is accountability. If we say that this department is doing X, then that department should be doing X, or that administrator should be doing Y. And one of the things that I want to make sure that we're doing is the checks and balances. And we've had some discussions about that, as you know, in terms of business and finance. And, you know, who, who is, who is, for example, jokingly, we say, who's, who's touching Munis and who's not touching Munis? Me. Definitely not touching it. And then really, my student learning goal is really taking a look at all students, because I'm the superintendent of all students, in terms of our discipline, retention, dropout prevention, absenteeism. That is a lot of data reports. Some of them are internal, some come from the state. I'll be looking at three-year trends, not just one year. So some of the trends I haven't been here for. Some of the data isn't really good, like MCAS, because we had the whole pandemic. What are we doing for college and career readiness, advanced placement? One of the important ones for me is dropout prevention and before and after school programming, above and beyond fees and structures that we have with parents for having kids after school, how are we supporting students who are behind? If you haven't read the Boston Globe today, had a very interesting piece on seven major big items that we should in education think about doing. And one of them, a lot of them have extension of a school day, extension of a school year. You've heard all of these before. Very, very few systems. I actually know one school system that has a 195-day system, of which it's 185 days for students and 195 for the staff, and compensated as such. That's a Massachusetts school system, by the way. But there's a lot of impacts that go with that as well. Easier to do at this secondary level in some ways than it is at the elementary level because of care and support and all of that. The other thing I think that's really important is, when I come back to you with the specifics, is resources. We are going to have to take a look at some of the resources that we're going to need as part of this comprehensive, these comprehensive goals, not only around the topic of, you know, checks and balances, but more importantly to me, the processes of how we do things. You know, how many, how many checkbooks do we really need in Stoughton Public Schools with student activities? How many X do we really need? What does our employee handbook look like? That's a, that's a big one as an employee. Today, myself and Mr. Colantonio met with that third party with, from, from Australia, looking at supporting teachers. You know, we've talked a lot about the social-emotional learning of, and mental health of our students, but we're also an employer. And what are we doing as an employer to support and retaining our staff? And you've heard about the issue of retention in public education to begin with. So how do we make sure that we are retaining the people we want to retain and that they want to stay in Stoughton Public Schools? And what does that mean in terms of, or what does that look like in terms of the supports that are coming, not only at the building level, but also out of the HR office and my office, to support those and wanting folks to, that are, that are outstanding educators to stay in Stoughton Public Schools and have their career here and not leave us? One of the concerns that I will put on the table tonight is, is that we need sooner than later to reach out to our new staff. They are definitely feeling the, what I would call the stresses of being a new educator. And I want to make sure that they know that, that we're going to be here to try to help them as much as we can and, and give them the supports. And if they're struggling with a certain area, that we're really giving that to them. And I've met with Matt already on that, on that topic, is how do we get all of our new staff together and say, how's it going? What do you need? How can we help? Where are you overwhelmed? Sometimes our profession kind of feels that that's asking too much, and you know, it's too much to put out there. I come from the perspective that, that we need to ask. We need to ask on our side of the table about, how are you doing? How, how is, how are the kids reacting? You know, are you having behavioral issues in the classrooms? If so, why? Instead of just saying, well, it's because of poor management, maybe we're having a discussion that we have a tough group of kids, or students that need further supports, and how do we get them those supports? We have to start doing that as an employer because, you know, we have 800 people that work in this district, day on and day off. And that's a big business. 800 people is not a small business. And it's a $56 million budget. That's a big, pretty decent-sized budget. So we need to really work on that employer side of it as, as much as we're working on the student side of it as well.
All right. I guess my, my question, I really do want to see how this is going to kind of be specified in goals and really the action plans, because I see a lot of work that needs to be done. And, you know, being able to follow milestones and this, especially given our relative inexperience as a committee with the superintendent evaluations, it just, I think sets us up for success, sets you up for success if we have very clear.
Yeah. And one of the things I do do is although, you know, it's, you know, the one-year check and the two-year, I will be putting together reports on a regular basis for you.
Okay.
So as I'm seeing something happening, as we're moving in a direction, you'll get a memo from me. That'll become part of my archived materials, that if I'm asked for to upload, I can do that for you. I can package it for you, whatever way you'd like to do it. So one of the things that is important to the comment you just made is that in, under responsible parties, which will be me leading it, the fact is I have supports that are working with me, which becomes part of their goals for them and meeting their, their timeline. So if I have to meet a timeline with the school committee, that probably means that some other folks have to meet a timeline with me. So, because it's, that's how it's going to flow in order to be able to, to address it.
On something like this, I, I love to have baselines. And I guess the, in evaluating anyone or anything, you have to have a baseline to know where you're coming or going. And I think one of the things like this last page with the student learning goals, it'd be wonderful to, to have those baselines. No, absentees, student discipline, retention, dropouts, prevention, all that. A year from now.
Where are we?
Where are we compared to, yes, just started?
So I'm looking at utilizing the data points that go before me. I know I'm not held accountable to that. I mean, I wasn't here. I get that.
Right.
But I think it sets a trend of what we're trying to do. And I'll give you an example. We need to establish a reading goal for this district. And our reading goal should be, in my opinion, a strong one and one that moves us. And so do we believe, do we want to have a reading goal that 90% of our students should be reading at grade level by the end of grade three?
Yeah.
Should that be a goal, right, as an example, right?
We should always have those goals.
Right. We should always have those goals. And we should be moving, as you heard tonight from Dr. Quahili and from Mr. Ford, that, you know, when we implemented with your support of a coach in a certain population, we saw growth from 10% to 47%.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
I know at the given school, they do that. My kid's going through the given school.
Yep.
I don't have any kids in the given school. But at least at the last couple of years, there's, your child is reading at this level.
Right.
And so on. And then, I mean, that, that's great baseline to go by and, and then see what happens in the years to come.
Right. And, and requires that I present potentially a budget at some point that says the, like was done before, we, we need this in order to get to that, because that's how we're going to provide an extended day for a population of students that need more time on reading, not necessarily just pull out on reading and hopefully push in, to be quite honest.
Yeah. One of the things I'd love to see is actually, since college and career readiness is in here, I'd like to get a baseline on SAT tests of the kids who are planning to go to college and see how we improve that through time. If you, I've seen a couple of publications recently about the best regional high schools. And Stoughton is really not ever on those lists. And it'd be wonderful. And one of the, one of the things they use is SAT scores. I think one of, the last one was Weston, comparing us to Weston, in which, you know, they had relatively high SAT scores. I'd like to be able to see if they're willing to share those scores and, and see that progress and perhaps even get Stoughton in one of these prestigious lists.
It's really interesting that you're saying that because the dynamics of the SAT and what's happening are really intriguing and interesting, right? Less kids are taking them, actually causing potentially better averages in certain communities, right? My daughter's going through the college process. However, I agree with you. Who's ever taking them, regardless, we should be saying to ourselves, how did we do? How can we get better? Increase our four-year college private enrollment, public enrollment, two-year, and/or kids who just want to go into the workforce. And by the way, what are we doing in the workforce? How are we supporting them to get there? They've decided they don't. So I think we should be able to take all of those different data points and say, this is the starting. And how do we move? And what are we doing to, to do that? College and career readiness, where I came from and implemented in my last district, and interesting enough, read an email today that got forwarded to me from my prior district, and that is literally running college courses during the high school day.
Yes.
And, and having students earn nine, 12 credits, in no way, shape, or form interrupting or causing layoffs or loss of jobs is actually increases jobs. Taking things like the AP and saying to a student, this course has been cleared to be either AP credit or take it as a three-credit. And if you know you're going to Assumption, and they take three-credit courses from X institution, I'll give you an example. There's a public two-year college that is a direct link to Assumption, Assumption University. Most people don't know that. You're going to a two-year public community college in Massachusetts, and all of your credits that are earned there, including an early college, are direct, if you get in, if you get in, because you still got to go to the acceptance, those credits go with you. So now you're entering as a second semester freshman.
And that's not guaranteed with AP.
And that's not guaranteed with AP.
And, and I know my son was in an AP course last year. I don't know that a single student passed the AP exam.
Yeah. The, the, the other thing that's happened is, that's important, is we now have this push for eighth, ninth grade PSATs. During COVID, PSATs after years of people like me who taught AP classes were after, can we do this electronically? All of a sudden, COVID happens, just like that. We had a 45, 50-minute test. By the way, it's usually a three-hour time test. It's usually longer, and nobody got a reimbursement on that test. I'm not anti-AP. I just think there's a lot of other things that we can offer families. This is also families who believe that AP is the only way. I'm not saying cut AP. I'm not saying eliminate AP. I'm not saying we should get rid of AP at all. I don't want that to get out there in any way, shape, or form. But what I am saying is that there are options for other students who may want to take a look. And the biggest ones that you have are looking at our gateway cities, where you, you have a push for students graduating with 30 credits from a local community college and transferring to UMass and the state college system, and saving themselves a ton of, a ton of money. And starting in 2025, as some of my colleagues in the room know, nationally, we will have the lowest number of students applying to college. Why? Because the numbers aren't there. We're going to be down half a million kids graduating from high school nationally. That's why. So we're going to have all of these colleges wanting or bombarding our, our, our students. So yes, long-winded story, and I apologize, SATs, all of that needs to be part of our data. And it's actually something that my colleagues here are working on, which is putting it all into one platform, so that we can then take a look at kids and say, how are we really doing as a, as a, as a community of learners? My apologies for the long answer.
Good answer.
So, Lindsay, do you have a question?
Quick question about like the process, which, if I'm getting ahead of you.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, okay. So these are sort of like pretty big umbrellas for topics.
Correct.
So is the idea here that we are like, yes, the, or we would approve these as umbrellas?
Yeah.
And then you'll sort of.
And then I'm going to come back to you with, with, with details on the umbrellas.
Like look into the data a little bit, see what sticks out.
Exactly.
And then build the goals from there.
Exactly.
And we're doing, or, I know your proposal was to do a two-year plan.
Yes.
So it's a two-year evaluation plan, but with annual goals?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I'm like mentally organized.
I'm, I am not a big fan of surprises. You'll probably get from me through the chair, I'll probably say, can I get on the agenda on this topic? Because I want to bring the committee up because X, Y, Z. Let's get it done instead of a massive report at the end, if you will.
I had just one quick question. With the student learning goals, you know, and I loved hearing you talk about, you know, staff and staff engagement. I'm wondering if you were going to have parallel goals for staff?
So in turn, I didn't do that per se directly there. I was thinking more under the human resources section and the, on the district improvement, because, for example, we really don't have a core exit interview process, right, as one example.
Yeah, I, I don't, that, there's a big philosophical debate around the value of an exit interview.
Okay.
But I would, I would argue poll surveys while they're still actively engaged and working with you might be more effective way of, of getting your, your finger on the pulse, so to speak.
And that's what we looked at today, with that, with that.
Yeah.
I mean, it was definitely, we're talking about a, a five-minute survey that goes into seven pockets of different types of questions besides the demographics, takes literally five minutes. It's done typically twice a year, gives you that pulse of networking, like do you feel you're connected in your school? And it's all, all done from a total, you know, you can't follow the data. I don't know that you, how you answered the question. It's literally a data collection.
Yeah.
We can do it by school, and then we can do it by district.
Mm-hmm.
So that we're getting those pulse, if you will, on the, on the, do you, one of the sections that sticks out to me today was literally, do you, do you feel connected to your, to your school and where you work?
Yeah.
And it's a set of questions, and those set of questions go into those seven pools. And then they give you data that's based on a zero to 100 scale.
Yeah.
Of course, getting people to do it. We actually talked about it in terms of our, using the data as part of our mentoring program. Like are we really supporting our first-year teachers to say, our first one, two, three years?
Right.
And then how are we supporting veterans that have been here for a while and, and so really hitting everybody?
And change management along the way.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, I, I would, I would love to hear your thoughts on, on what that might look like, just to, because it's, there's a, in a sense, as a super. Just to, because it's, there's a, in a sense, as a superintendent, there's a dual customer base for you. You know, one is, one is students and their support networks and the other are your, your staff and their support networks. And we are both educator and employer, so. Thank you.
Okay.
On the latter, if I'm seeking a two-year plan, that's an evaluation every two years.
Yes, so it's a formative at the year one, it's a summative in year two.
Can we make it annual?
Well, you are making it annual.
Yeah.
You're giving me feedback, direct feedback at the end of the first year about what's happened in the first year and then you're taking a summit, which is really reviewing the two years in this particular case.
So yeah, it's not, and MASC and DESI you talk about for a more experienced superintendent, it's not uncommon to have a two-year process for Dr. Robb. We were looking at one year because he was fairly new to, you know, to the position and the district as well. But it, there's, you know, the five-step process. We asked the superintendent to do self-reflection. We set goals together. He does, puts the plan into place. We may have some feedback in terms of, he may come to us for resources as he's talking about doing. We may ask him to provide the evidence. He's offering to do that with reports. We could also ask him, you know, if, let's say he's, you know, finds data. And we ask, we have a folder, Google Docs folder where he finds, you know, puts the reports or something like that. And then we have the formative evaluation where he comes back to us. It is much more informal. We ask questions. And like tonight with the triennial plan, we may have to tweak something. Maybe, you know, he's, he had a plan that involved a grant. The grant fell through. So we have to change that or, you know, as this, something takes longer than, than we expected because it's just more complicated like the SEL. And then we do the summit, which is, has to be a public discussion. It's going to be a public document. So don't be surprised when that gets published publicly, but that has to be a public discussion because this is the, the one thing that we get to do publicly is discuss the superintendent's performance. But by focusing on the goals, it makes it much more fair for us and makes it, you know, much more objective.
And one of the things I've learned, thank you for the support of the experience, is I've learned that I don't want to give you surprises and I don't want to get surprises from you. I want it to be a constant communication. And so if you don't get the data point that you thought you were going to get, you email me or you make it, you know, I always say, just email me. I'll make, I'll try to make, to get it to the next meeting for you. And then we can discuss it and put it on the agenda item. To me, it's got to be that constant communication, two ways, so that I can, if I improve what you're looking for me, I can improve the team and it's a constant, constant circle of improvement. It's never, the work is never done.
And the MASC, MASC has a whole bunch of materials for superintendent evaluation. I believe I sent you, there was a whole working lunch. You can watch the video, but there's also slides that came with it and that. And if, if you would think it would be helpful, we can actually have them come in. They have a workshop they can give us on the whole process. So I can reach out to them. We did in charting the course, but that may have been like, you know, hour six and you were glazed over. So I'm certainly happy to reach out if that would be helpful at any point in this process. Certainly as we go, maybe go forward to do the summit of evaluation, that might be really helpful for us to have that refresher because that's, that's a relatively new thing for us, for those of us who are on the, on the committee to do, so.
I'd like a two-way street. Tell us what we're doing wrong and what we can do.
That's for us. We get to decide. We who are on self-adjustment.
I am going to stay away from that one. My, my only comment will always be that the committee does policy and money and everything else, please ask. I will always try to get you the right answers. That's my goal, but nope, I'm not going to do that. Unless I really have to, but, and I would never do it publicly. I can guarantee you that.
Madam Chair, I have a question of you.
Yes.
In, in your experience or in your knowledge, do you know of professional development is, because once again, you know, superintendent is our employee and we want to make sure he feels supported in his development and learning goals. How can we best support him, you know, in his career path?
That's a good question. I think that's, the point of the goals is that we make sure the goals feel fair and aligned with the district. What, where we see the district going, that we're all aligned. I think that's really important. So if we set strong goals and we agree with those goals and they align with the district plan, the triennial plan, what the district's moving towards. I think that's the first thing because if that's, if that's, if we're all moving together, that's the big thing. And then I think, again, the communication that we, you know, if he has to meet, needs resources, he comes to us in terms of budget. And then I think if we have the collection of evidence or the reports as it goes along, that's really helpful for us to see where it's going because that makes the evaluation process so much easier for us. And, you know, our, the formative evaluation, the year-end experience would be really helpful for us as well to just make sure that we're all on track and that, again, we can say, is there something that he needs or that, is there something that we need to do to make sure that we can, you know, make this, this work together the next year and that this is successful? Because that's the goal is, you know, not surprise and say, oh, you know, we, we thought this was going to be wrong, but, or we thought this was going to be different. But I think the key step here is do goals right now and make sure that we're all set with those, so.
So learning and development is not a part of this conversation at all?
So the idea behind the superintendent's evaluation is under the professional one, that's for me. So I put together that the entry plan for me is really important because I have to, and I'm reporting that back as a goal, if you will, because it is part of my professional development, learning all of the players and so on and so forth. In terms of my contract, for example, there is professional development, course reimbursement and all of that. So I go through the chair, if I want to attend the Harvard Certificate Program for a week in the summer and the cost is X and my contract says I can do that, then I send something to the chair that says I'm going to be out because I'm going to be at that certificate program or something like that. At this stage in my career, to be quite honest, most of it is really going to, for example, today, I went to the District Attorney's Norfolk County DA's meeting for two hours and learned about all of the different programs that the DA's office does. And I didn't know because I'm new to this district. I kind of knew a little bit of it because of my prior district. It's just in a different county, but it's a lot of the same things. By the way, the DA's office is doing fantastic stuff. So that would be more my professional growth is that, that type of stuff. I have the New England Association of School Superintendents and I'm on the board. NESTEC, I'm on the board, so I'm attending. Those workshops, I actually give workshops and I, and I provide workshops and I participate in workshops. So we got one upcoming on legal topics that I'm part of a roundtable as an example. Versus another topic that I'll be, we're going to is, not new to me, but it's all on digital stuff. So I'm going to that in terms of policy.
I just didn't want you to think that all we cared about was like, you know, outcomes, outcomes, outcomes. I mean, obviously outcomes are important. But we care about you as, you know, we, we want you to stick around and we want to make sure we're supporting you.
Superintendent plans to stick around.
Yes, we, we look forward to having as a superintendent stick through the two-year process evaluation process.
That's our goal.
Yes, that's our goal. All right, so the goal for next, next time, our next meeting. Yes, we'll look at the details and that's when we would look through it and vote on it, so.
And if you, between now and the end of the week, something comes up, just shoot me a quick email and I'll make sure that I, I try to see how I can incorporate it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Wellness Policy Committee. And this is, I don't know if you, if you guys have a chance to review our wellness policy. It's been up, it's been what, for a while. I know Mr. Cullen told me he's ready to speak a little bit more about this. It does, it has not been reviewed recently. That being said, there has been a lot of wellness and health issues discussed over the past few years with COVID. And so the proposal is to form, reform the Wellness Committee, which has been inactive for a, for a period of time. I don't know, Mr. Ford probably knows how long it's been or.
Last meeting I attended was in high school.
Okay, so it's been, it's been a few years, yes, pre-COVID. Would be to look at this, but I don't want to look at this just to look at it, just for the purpose of, or with the goal of throwing it all out the window. But because with the social emotional learning that's coming from our triennial plan, we have had some calls from parents of students with life-threatening allergies or other allergies to also look at, kind of, you know, look at this. And I'd rather do a real evaluation than just piecemeal here and there. You mentioned also that there's new guidelines for.
Yeah, though we have, we don't have them yet, but it's, but, but again, I think they'll come in enough time for us to make sure that this committee is also looking at them at the same time.
And then, of course, with the school lunches now being, you know, accessible and free for everyone in perpetuity, does that affect the nutrition guidelines? So there are reasons that it would be helpful to look at this and just say, you know, is, does this policy need to be changed anyway? Is it, is it fine as it is? There's certainly things that can be looked at for this. To do that with the Wellness Committee, we have the suggested composition in our packet. Those are suggestions. So I don't know who wants to speak to the work that the Wellness Committee has done in the past and.
I will, Madam Chair, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Just quick, I know there's some two, some new members. Pre-COVID, well, actually, the regulations didn't change, but, so districts are required to have a Wellness Committee. It's supposed to be a representative committee of all stakeholders, functioning as sort of an advisory group for the superintendent and school committee in the district. I think like lots of things, Wellness Committees took a wild ride during COVID. As you can imagine, it covers things like nutrition and health and safety and physical activity. So maybe more than most other things, Wellness Committees took a little dip in reality with, with COVID. But, so the Wellness Committee, I believe, is supposed to each year meet. The recommendation is four times a year at least. And look at the Wellness Policy and regularly revise it and update it. So I think the, the recommendation of, I think it's 17, don't judge my math, I think it's 17, the 17-member recommendation there. I think it gives you a representative sample from all stakeholders. It also makes it not, you know, unwieldy group of 50 or something like that. So I think looking at the Wellness Policy is a good idea. Not just because it's, it maybe hasn't been revisited in a while, but there's a lot of the new standards in phys ed and health by themselves would be a reason for everyone to really look at their policies. Most, most Wellness Policies are going to cover phys ed and health education, so. So, yeah, I, I think the recommendation for that group to get together and talk about everything. Nutrition, food in classrooms, food in schools, mental health, physical health, physical activities, staff wellness, student wellness, all of the above, some of the stuff that we touched on today. But, you know, some, some of the stuff that's, I would say, kind of always been in Wellness Policies even before COVID. So I think the recommendation there is for one school committee member, three parents, one from each level. I'm going to say, let's say pre-K to five, yeah. So Ms. Feeney doesn't get mad at me. And middle school and high school, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Wellness, I hear he's a pretty good guy. Secondary principal and elementary principal, the Supervisor of Health Services, Danielle Gallin. Two school nurses, three faculty, our staff members appointed by the superintendent, one SHS student appointed by the superintendent, a community member appointed by the superintendent, the Food Service Supervisor and the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Technology, who misses his role on the Wellness Committee, I'm sure.
And the, but per the Wellness Policy, this Food Service Supervisor is required to be on this part of this committee. So it does ask that it, they report to us annually and recommendations, so. Questions or comments from the committee?
I'd like to recommend we increase the number of parents a little bit from three to maybe five. I'd like to get as many parents involved as possible in the entire wellness world. We have three nurses, or three from the health area?
Yes.
If, if the number of them is too big, maybe we can eliminate one or something. Increasing the parents shouldn't make that huge of a difference.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Bur, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with the five parents. The school nurses, what we try to do with this is we try to keep this elementary, secondary thing going, discussions. And again, this is volunteer, so who knows what will happen. But again, having the parents, I think one of the things that's, that's really important about, you know, the Wellness Committee is it's taking as much of the information that's available to us to hit all those different pockets. We know there's a lot of discussion around this topic, clearly. We, we, you know, food in classrooms, all of that stuff that are very difficult to undertake, by the way, lots of opinions. But that's the reason why you put a working group together, so that they can really work it through. So by the time it comes to you, it's as clean as possible. I just underwent this in my last district. It was almost a two-year process. But we were lucky enough also to get a grant from the state and so they had an expert from DESI who kind of said, you know, this is the gold standard. I have provided that copy and will, to the, to the working committee, or we'll provide it. I've already given it to Mr. C. And I think the last part of it that's, that's really important is that the final say is yours, right? Because it becomes a policy, reminding ourselves that policy and procedure, protocols are two different things. You know, procedure, protocols will remain on this side of the aisle. Policy will be on your side of the aisle.
The other thing I was, that's fine, what you said. Perfect. The other thing I was thinking, perhaps we can add a coach if it's possible.
Yes.
Because of the expanded athletic program.
And you know, when I looked at community, that was one of the things I thought, I did think about is do I try to get somebody from the community? In my last district, I did have someone from the community who was a PhD in the field. So, but yes, we can absolutely make sure that we add, we add a, make sure that we have a coach as one of the three.
Faculty members.
Faculty staff members. More than likely, they're going to be a staff member. So I'll make sure that I really target that. And again, this will go out for volunteers and then we'll see what, what we, what we get.
Lindsay, a question?
Yeah, I just had a question, not to like continue proposing that we add a lot of people because I don't want this to become like a, you know, a huge body, but I'm interested in finding ways to add a little bit more student voice to this. I think we have one high school student, which is great, would also be interested in like the lower grades. I know they're, they're certainly younger, but also have opinions to offer and some points of view that may be helpful. But I wonder if that's like by appointing students to the, this committee or if it's just by like asking this committee to do some things to collect student voice and like incorporate that into the process.
So that's a really great question. So the idea of having student input, I put the, again, adding more students, not a problem. It always gets down to that, what's the lowest grade level where everybody feels comfortable in the room? So maybe OMS, eighth grader, something. We could definitely look at that too. Just because of, you know, what they bring to the table is, yes, I want to make sure that we have more of this and more of that, which I totally get and support. When we get to the elementary level, I don't know how much of that we would get. Sometimes surveys are used by the Wellness Committees as a way to, to get parent input and community input and student input. That would be what this committee would decide to do as part of writing their recommendation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm totally open to adding. I didn't want to, my hesitation to be perceived as I didn't want to add, but I'm mindful of what a representative group is, is supposed to be.
So. And this group could be further broken up after they're appointed. For example, Mr. Ford is, is curriculum and technology, so he's, he's, he's not necessarily looking at nutrition as an example in the Food Services Department, right? That's not his area. That's not his wheelhouse. Versus Food Services Supervisor, guy is probably just saying, yep, I'm going to worry about the cafeterias. Everything else is really not in my, my domain, if you will. So these could be broken up into various different subcommittees within it so that the work gets done quicker.
I would like to, to echo and elevate Lindsay's comment about, about student voice since they are, I assume, the intended recipients of said Wellness Policy. That there's a vehicle for a stronger student voice there or co-design or vetting of the policy with the students. I know that there's HOSA. I don't know if there are other student voices that you feel could help that would be important for this conversation around wellness. I thought, you know, like having a representative from HOSA and then maybe they have their own meetings and that person brings information back. and that person brings information back or vets information down, are there other avenues that you can think of where student voice might be possible?
The only club I can honestly think of is HOSA, like you said, I can't really think of anything else that really deals with that kind of stuff, that would be able to place an opinion.
One, one recommendation, very strong recommendation I would have, would be the school committee's full support, continued support of bringing back the Student Health Survey in six to twelve, which is optional to parents to not allow for it, but having the opportunity, that's a huge piece of data and information, where students are giving us input anonymously, and that data should be used as part of forming and providing you folks with what our wellness should look like as a district.
I agree, one of the things I was thinking about is perhaps allowing students that might be interested in going on to the medical field, to get this experience of being a part of committee to, for wellness of the school, which of course, you know, hopefully will learn and perhaps even apply to their resume if they apply to programs.
So, one of the things that we could consider is, once the committee is starting to ground its work, if you will, is really take a look at some focus groups with students and saying, what do you think, that might be a better working process for the working group, would be some focus groups, and probably with someone that can ask them ten or twelve questions and they can talk about it as a group, take the key words and findings from that group, and then again, use the health survey results as well.
With that, I would recommend having peers lead those groups, maybe trained in leading, because they might be more open and receptive to comments coming from peers or others that have the same lived experiences that they have.
Yeah, I've also utilized third parties outside, that are not, not our employees per se, they come from the outside, we compensate them, but they're, they have no judgment of anybody that's in front of them in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, no, staff, you end up with a power dynamic at times, and that can be challenging. My last comment is really around, and I know that you're already trying to think of this, is that when you have this body together, you know, like, how are you going to get them in the same room, considering times, this has always been an issue in workforce development, where you're supposed to have representatives of the youth that you serve and a parent, but then they have a meeting at like nine o'clock in the morning, when all of the workforce folks can be there, but not anybody else, so I, I know that's already a part of your consideration, is just the process of meeting to make sure that it's as inclusive as possible, so.
Yeah, they were, they were evening meetings, as I remember, back pre-COVID, they were, they were at a time where folks could do it, it was, if I remember it right, it was hotter for the students.
Yeah.
To be there, but, yeah.
And hybrids the other way.
Yeah, virtual.
Alright, so what do we need to do, do we need to vote to move this forward, or do we need to approve the makeup of the committee?
Yeah, approving the makeup of the committee is the best way to do this, because that way, you know, you've had your input, as it is a committee that's coming back to the full committee, to the full school committee, I should say, so I have it down as five parents, and I have a coach as a potential staff, again, based on who's coming forward and who was willing, and then I did put down, I do have the focus groups, so, you know, do we add another high school student, do we add an OMS student, keep it one and one, it's really, really up to you folks. I think the folk, I think having one student from the high school, maybe even two, is a good idea on the committee, I think we try to do more with the focus groups, because we could potentially, with approval, actually do those as part of the school day, you know, where we're taking students out for a focus group of information and getting that information back to the full committee, if we're gonna do a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I would just wanna do anything that would avoid tokenism of students, where they're just kind of decoration, so to speak, and where there's a balance of power, where they feel empowered to speak up and say and to follow the conversations.
Yeah, I think the focus groups are a great idea, especially at the middle school level, I can see hesitation on a middle school student wanting to attend the meeting and speak for eight hundred middle school kids, but I think if you did focus groups at National Junior Honors Society, or pick a club, you'd get a lot of student voice and input, so I like the idea of the focus groups.
I do, too.
And a rep, I could see a rep from the middle school, you might, you know, you might find a middle school student who's brave enough to do it.
The other question is for parents, how do we select them and who is in charge of selecting them, I know it'd be faster for the superintendent, but this is our committee, do we want to have some say in how the parents are selected? I am a little bit concerned about the delicacy of parents feeling they need to share or having to share information, medical information, I don't wanna put anybody in a position where they, they need to, or that's part of the process, but I know that usually we solicit people based on their interest and how to do that sensitively.
So, one recommendation, Madam Chair, if I may to you, from some experience, is to, tonight, vote that you're adding five, to have the letters of request to participate sent to the superintendent, and share it with two of you, that will, you as the chair and the vice chair, let's say, or whoever combination you want, and those would be appointments, you know, we might get ten people who wanna do it, we might get fifty, we might get three, we, what we would do is just do the social media, the letter, probably put in mind newsletter at some point, that type of stuff, we're looking, we're looking, and then collecting that and providing it to you.
So, it's an application process, then from there, you appoint someone from the application process, I think the, probably get a higher response or greater variety or diversity of apply, and if you happen to have, you know, a background in wellness, or you're a parent and so on.
Yeah, I think if you're a parent, in this particular case, it's a parent assignment by the school committee, why do you wanna be on this committee? And allow for folks to say, well, you know, I'm so-and-so, and I have a, you know, a twelfth grader, you know, I have experience in this field, whatever the case may be, that's the way I've seen it done in the past, and it's, like I said, you may get fifty people, you may only get five, I don't know.
Something I was wondering is whether or not it would make sense to also allow for nominations from principals of the schools, like at the elementary level, I know that Mrs. Mulvey knew the parents really well, just to ensure that there is greater representation rather than folks who would self-select into this committee, where there may not be the representation of the community or the diverse wellness needs that our community may have. Just pose.
All of the above.
I mean, if you went the principal route, like you, like you just noted, principals are very aware, I mean, it just still means that you're only choosing five, so you're gonna have to probably get one from each category and then maybe two extra from the elementary, just because there's more elementary schools, but we could easily send that, they could send it out on their newsletter, collecting information, give you the appointment, give it, give you names and then go from there.
Okay, alright, so, we need to vote, vote to approve the committee?
Yeah, vote to, to appoint the Wellness Committee with the changes of five parents, basically that's the number one change there, focus groups and all that are understood, I don't think you need to vote that, and then the process would be to provide the superintendent communication to building principals to collect nominees for the school committee to be on the Wellness Committee.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the Wellness Committee composition with the five rather than the three parents, but otherwise as written, and then the directive to the superintendent to solicit nominations from the principals?
Aye.
Alright, so that motion was made by Armando, second?
Second.
Second from Chris, so that motion is moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, so the motion's carried for zero, so looking forward to getting that, do we need to appoint the school committee member tonight?
No, we can do it at the next meeting, do it all at the next meeting.
Alright, we'll, we'll fight over who needs to do that. The next item on our agenda is the warrants, we actually do have warrants to approve, so we've, do I have a motion to approve the warrants?
Motion to approve the warrants.
Alright, motion to approve the warrants from Lindsay, second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, the motions have been approved, the warrants have been approved for zero, and the next is the acceptance of the minutes from September 12th, 2023, at this time, it asks for amendments or corrections, I have a couple.
For you as well?
Okay, Lindsay, maybe I'll start with you.
Okay, so absent lists Angie Berry, but she was present, I think she came, she might have arrived a little, yes, but yeah, so, but she was there, okay, under appointments for eleven and twelve, the CPAC and the LPAC?
Yes.
Just some of the language, these are, the CPAC and the LPAC themselves are not newly formed, but the liaison appointment is a new appointment, if that's, can I get somebody with historical knowledge to like, confirm that, okay?
Yes, yes.
So, just wanted to like, clarify that wording.
So, just, Christiane, and to the English language train advisory?
Yes, not newly formed, but.
Yep, understood.
Yes.
Both of them.
And then, under other matters at the end, I just wanted to clarify, the Pilgrim Area Collaborative did not meet over the summer, and meetings will resume in October, not September, so it's, that should just be October.
Oh, October.
That was my question, I was gonna ask you.
Yes.
I have one correction under the public comment, the second person who spoke was Josie Mar Bailey, I will get the correct spelling of her name to, to our recording secretary, so that was, that was my fault, I did not give her the public comment sign-in for that, any other comments or amendments? Alright, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Motion to approve the minutes from September 12th, 2023, as amended.
Alright, the motion was made by Lindsay, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando, the motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstained.
Abstained, because you were, oh, that, right, correct, so the motion is carried three, zero, with one abstention, alright, moving on to old business, getting close to the end, thank everyone for staying with us, the next, the only old business we have is the Elementary School Building Project Update and Responsibilities, a couple things to note, we had boards and flyers at the back-to-school nights last week, at all of them, and we think the project team, Dr. Bayata, were you at the Hanson?
I was.
Yes, Lindsay was at the DAW, I was at the Gibbons for a part of it, so thank you very much for helping out with that, we had a lot of great questions, a lot of great involvement, people had good questions, I feel a little better about knowing, at least the school committee is aware of the project, they had questions about specifics, Lindsay got a very nice note from Mr. Cancellery, saying that the families really appreciated seeing school committee members there, so that was great, we will have a table at Stoughton Day this Saturday, September 30th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Halloran Park on Pier Street, if anyone would like to help out, so I'm not there the whole time, that would be great, I know the project team is also there, you can email me later, you don't have to act yourself on public access TV, but that would be great, it seems really helpful to have us, the project team will help out, too, but to have us there as visible, people tend to approach us more and ask good questions. The next big step is tomorrow, we have the MSBA Facilities Assessment Subcommittee Presentation at 9:55, so wish us luck tomorrow at 10:00 AM, so, this is a big thing, this is really the big hurdle, once we present this, the board vote should be an easy thing, the next Building Committee meeting is Wednesday, October 11th at 7:00 PM here in the conference room at the district office, do you have anything to add from the Building Committee, Dr. Bayata?
I do not, I think you were thorough.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of in a holding pattern until we do this presentation, so that's, none of that, any questions?
Just, good luck tomorrow, and thank you to the Building Committee for this whole, like, I just was a little nervous about going to the DAW to present, or like, shocked about it, just because I haven't been immersed in it, but I was like, wow, I actually like, I don't know, you all have done so much to keep us informed and like, looped in throughout the whole process, I actually felt very comfortable like, communicating and knowing where I didn't know things and where you'd find out more, so like, I just wanted to say thank you.
Yes, I think the, the building team's done a great time, a good job, the Building Committee, the project team, you know, the presentation tomorrow, I think we feel very prepared, so hopefully it all goes well, so, any other matters, I don't have anything, no communication, alright, next item is to adjourn, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, October 10th at 7:00 PM here in the conference room at the district office, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we?
We adjourn and then we, we do, we have to do, yes, so, we have to adjourn officially.
So, a motion to adjourn.
Alright, so the motion is made by Lindsay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando, it's been moved and seconded, roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, this motion is carried for zero, the meeting is adjourned at, what's the official time?
9:18.
9:18 PM, thank you all for coming and good night, we're gonna take a two-minute recess and then we'll get back to our other business, thank you for coming, thank you all.